John and Sean, just an audio check, please.
Yeah, I got you here.
Okay. I'm clear.
Thank you. Hello, check one.
Thanks, John. I'm just focusing on audio where it's coming from. Can you just? One more time?
Yeah, sure. No problem. Still live here.
Is that sound coming from? Is it coming from your laptop?
Me talking?
Yeah, I'm talking, but it's not coming through chambers right now. It's coming from an individual. You can hear it? Is it clear? Okay. One more time there, John?
Yeah, sure. No problem. Here we are talking one more time. Testing audio levels and signals. Let me know once that is good and I will stop talking. I will keep on talking till I hear word good. Check one, two.
I gotta figure out the room is not through the projection speakers bringing the audio down. So one moment.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, John, it should be good now. One more time.
Okay, you guys all good over there? Everybody hearing me?
Excellent. Yep, we're good. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I just do a test just to see if anybody in chambers can hear my speaker?
Hi, Counselor. Yep, we heard you. No problem.
Thank you very much, Sean. Hi, guys. Can you hear me? Hey, Wes, you're back. Oh, I can't hear you. Hold on.
It's just the Counselor.
Yeah, I can hear now. So who's in council chambers? Um, I can see. Wes is. Mike, you're there, but you just have a virtual background. Okay. And Shelley's there. Is Sheena there? Okay. Okay, whoever's running the camera is gonna make me dizzy. Okay, I'll give it a couple more minutes and they'll call us to order. So just so you know, guys, I'll probably be rushing us along a little bit because I would like to get out of here as fast as I can and get the debt strategy stuff done. So just be warned. All right, is Natalie with us?
No, she hasn't signed in yet, Madam Mayor.
Okay, but everyone else is present?
Madam Mayor, she was, she had texted me earlier and said she might have reception difficulties as she's out at the cabinet.
Okay. Um, all right, I'm going to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, May 16th. In attendance, we have everyone except Counselor Jolly, and it sounds like Counselor Bransky, Counselor Broadhead, Counselor Hughes, and Counselor Killik are in chambers. Counselor Mackay at home, I think, and Mayor Harren's in Ottawa. Technology, it's great. Are you at Counselor Mackay?
No, I'm at a meeting with the Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission, breaking free, so.
Okay, thanks for doing that, breaking free. So I need a motion. I have, I'm unaware of any changes to the agenda, so I'm going to just ask for somebody to make a motion. Counselor Mackay?
Actually, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to give it to Counselor.
Killik, you're passing the wand?
I'm, I'm passing the torch virtually.
That's good.
That the May sixteen, twenty twenty-three agenda be adopted as presented.
Perfect, thank you for that. I will now call for the vote. And because I am a virtual Cheryl or someone from ledge, can you just read it publicly, how the motion goes? I'm assuming that one's unanimous.
Yes, it's unanimous.
Thank you. All right, we have some fun stuff today. Annually, I think for the last couple of years, for sure, we have data proclamation for the block party season. Can't remember how long ago we started this program. I think it was long before I was on city council even because I sat as a community rep on the vandalism task force. And I think councillor Mackay was assigned there by you through the community service advisory report. Vandalism task force explored a lot of different ideas, you know, from curfews for the youth to a bunch of more punitive ideas, but the block party was one that came out as a great way to build community connections. And, you know, once we have those connections, we hopefully would minimize some of the, you know, petty vandalism stuff we were seeing in neighborhoods. So the block party season or block party program was born. There's a lot of great resources that the city provides towards block parties. And then in two thousand and seventeen, for Canada's hundred and fiftieth anniversary, we strove to have a hundred and fifty block parties in St. Albert, and we achieved that, and we self-proclaimed ourself block party of Canada. And I don't know if that's a self-proclamation or not, but we did, and we still hold that proudly. So it does be great pleasure to read the proclamation, and then I do believe we have James Rossman in chambers, is that correct? Somebody give me a thumbs up. Hi, James. So I don't know, Jay, I'll read the proclamation. I don't know if you want to say a few words. And the councillor Bromanski, who's our deputy mayor right now, has the proclamation to hand off to you. And so you can come on down and we'll get a picture with those members of council in the room. And I really appreciate for what you do. So I'll read it now. So whereas meeting and getting to know our neighbors creates a sense of community connectedness and safety. And whereas St. Albert residents actively participate in creating safe, caring neighborhoods through their roles as neighborhood connectors, freedom library stewards and block party hosts. And whereas the city of St. Albert embraces block parties so much so that we are national leaders in neighborhood development. And whereas block parties are a favorite summer tradition in St. Albert. Now, therefore, on behalf of council, I, Cathy Haron, mayor of the city of St. Albert, do hereby proclaim block party season officially open. So hopefully we'll have a few block parties even starting this weekend because it's gonna be so nice. You know, minus any open fires, I'm sure. But James, I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Sure, am I mic'd up up here?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, wow, cool. I'm actually here receiving this on behalf of Brittany Brown Wiley, one of our neighborhood connectors. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it here today. But I just wanted to share something from her. She's been hosting block parties ever since she moved to Lacombe Park nine years ago. And as a mother of three, she finds that it's, it's really helpful to know your neighbor. You know, what family has kids, who are the parents you can trust? And it's just, we sort of wanna foster deeper connections and just walk and pass each other and saying hello, you know. So we're really happy that block parties has been such a strong program. And Brittany is looking forward to hosting hers this year, and we hope that everybody listening at home is looking forward to hosting theirs. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you, James, and thank you for coming in and speaking on behalf of Brittany. I will just pause now and let you guys all gather down on the floor in front of the bench, and we'll get a picture and throw it up on social media. I was quick. Thanks, guys. I can see on the floor the go-kart. Hopefully, everybody got pictures taken in the adult-sized go-kart. Lots of good stuff in chambers today. I'm gonna move on now. There's no business arising from that delegation because it was more proclamation. I need a member of council to read into the record the consent agenda. It's my understanding that nothing has been pulled from consent, is that correct, Ledge? Cheryl, is that good?
That's correct.
All right. Need a volunteer, just throw your hand up. Councillor Broadhead, go ahead.
I'll read it in. A little bit of confusion if who had their hand up there. That the recommendations on following agenda reports be approved. Six dot one, regular council meeting minutes of May second, twenty twenty-three. Seven dot one, standing committee of the whole item ten-year municipal RMR capital plan. Seven dot two, standing committee of the whole item ten-year utility RMR capital plan. Seven dot three, community services advisory committee of the environmental advisory committee. Recommendations for community recognition. Seven dot four, request for city council motion from arts development advisory committee. Young artist legacy award program. Seven dot five, request for city council motion from arts development advisory committee. Withdraw from public art reserve. Eight dot three, corporate quarterly report, Q one, twenty twenty-three. And eight dot four, twenty twenty-three Alberta municipalities convention resolutions. And twenty twenty-three Federation of Canadian municipalities update.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Killick. When we get to those, I will read into the record what was passed on consent. But for now, I will just ask for a vote. And I'll get Cheryl to read it in when it's done.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna read off some of the stuff that was on consent. So six point one was just the minutes from May second. Seven point one read that the ten-year municipal RMR capital plan provided as an attachment to the report dated May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, entitled ten-year municipal RMR capital plan be received as information. That council members submit any motions for proposed amendments to the ten-year municipal RMR capital plan to administration by May nineteenth. And that administration prepare backgrounds for motions proposed to this, to the plan for a June sixth meeting date. And I am not going to repeat the because they're exact same motions for seven point two, but with the utility RMR plan. To save on time, let's see. Next was seven point three, which was community service advisory committee. Who's the council rep on community service advisory committee? Is that you, councillor Killick?
Yes.
Do you wanna read that in with the, with the names for me? Do you mind?
Do we have the names?
It's just.
Be in the.
It's way in the back. Oh, you know what, maybe I can do it. Hold on.
I put it in chat here.
Okay, thank you. That works perfect.
I, I can read it in, I do have.
No, I've got it. Now that it's in the chat, it's easier for me. So thanks, Cheryl. That the following nominees receive the two thousand and twenty-three City of St. Albert Community Recognition Awards. This is always super exciting. So Dr. Alan Murdoch in the citizenship category. And Lena Tony Drewitt in the environment stewardship category. So super excited to recognize those two in the near future. And then seven point four was request for city council motion for the arts development advisory committee, young artist legacy program. So is that in the chat now too?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay. Okay, that the following applications for the lieutenant governor's young artist legacy award program be awarded. Applicant number one was Emma Vandawa, recommended award of three hundred and eighty dollars. Emma would like to attend the Citadel Forte Theater Summer Camp. And then applicant number two is Niles Maj Pleasure. I know that kid, recommended for five hundred dollars. Niles would like to attend the Windsor Park Chamber Music Workshop. Applicant number three is Aisha Karan, recommended award is three, three hundred and eighty, eighty-one dollars and fifty cents to attend the Pygmalion School of Fine Art. Rebecca, or applicant number four is Rebecca Lupaschak. The award is five hundred dollars to attend the Pygmalion School of Fine Art. And the total of those awards council was one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. Money well spent. Okay, and then I think, yes, seven point five was also on consent. Which was a request for city council motion from the arts development advisory committee, so a withdrawal from reserves. That up to sixteen thousand, nine hundred be withdrawn from the public art reserve to fund RMR work for cultivate life. All right, eight point one was not on consent. It is the scope change for fire station number one and the decommissioning to include thirteen Mission Ave. So is Mike Erickson with us? Hi, Mike.
I am. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm actually going to have Christian Benson, manager, investment, attraction and growth, provide the presentation this afternoon.
All right, go ahead, Christian.
Good afternoon, council. Administration is requesting a scope change to the Fire O two six capital project, former Fire Hall One decommissioning to allow a portion of the remaining funds to be allocated to the demolition and preparation of the site for future development of thirteen Mission Ave. Thirteenth Mission Ave is a seventy-three-year-old building that recently housed in the North American, Northern Alberta Business Incubator offices and has been vacant since May twenty twenty-one. The building sits on a parcel of just under one acre of land. It's within the city's Mission neighborhood. The building on thirteen Mission Ave has been deemed to be below average condition, and will require significant improvements to allow for new tenancy. As the land value threshold has surpassed the current building value, administration is recommending decommissioning and demolition of the building to allow for future redevelopment of the site. Administration has completed several due diligence items on the site, including an enhanced phased one environmental site assessment, an application to the government of Alberta for historic resource application for redevelopment of the site, a third-party appraisal of the condition and value of the site, as well as consultation with the Arts and Heritage Foundation regarding the site significance and inclusion on the municipal heritage inventory. It's estimated that decommissioning and demolition of the vacant building on thirteen Mission Ave will take approximately three months. There's just over eighty percent of initial funds remaining in the original former Fire Hall project, which will cover the costs associated with thirteen Mission Ave decommissioning. In addition to completing the remaining items on the future, the former Fire Hall One site with contingencies included for both sites. The former Fire Hall One remaining items include a review of gravel service and other potential minor review changes once the subdivision application is complete. Administration anticipates returning to council later in twenty twenty-three to provide options on the redevelopment of thirteen Mission Ave. The intention of the decommissioning of thirteen Mission Ave is to avoid ongoing operational costs and staff time associated with the maintenance and upkeep of the site and for the preparation of future site development. That's all I have today. Be happy to answer some questions.
Thank you so much, Christian. Might be a couple of questions. Anyone have any questions? Councillor Killick's shaking his head, councillor Mackay is, councillor Broadhead, any questions? I can't see councillor Hughes and councillor Bromanski. Are you signed into Zoom?
I am. I just have the camera off because you know where I am. No questions.
Okay, councillor Bromanski, go ahead. Are you any questions?
No questions.
All right, I won't get councillor Bromanski to make the motions. Can you keep your cameras on, guys, so I can see you if you have questions or not? Can I get you to make the motion, councillor Hughes?
Absolutely. The council approve a change in scope to project four two two three three seven, fire station number one, to include decommissioning thirteen Mission Avenue.
All right, thank you for that. Anything to comment on that, councillor Hughes?
Just thank you for the presentation. You guys, it was really straightforward. That's why we had no questions. Other than I look really bad on the screen and it's distracting. That's why I don't want the camera on, Mayor. Pass that. Oh, oh, my dear Lord, honestly. Okay.
Hey, councillor Hughes, after two years of doing this nonstop.
Oh, my God, okay, I just. Distracting, okay. Back to the focus here. Station, I think it needs to be done. This is obviously actually a no-brainer, and just thanks for bringing it forward to us. It was well enough that literally not one person had one question. So that's it. That's right.
Yeah. Anyone else in debate?
Mayor, just to say that it's good news that it can be accommodated within the initial budget. So there's no more, not a budget increase required as well as final remediation of Fire Hall One as well, under the contingency. So it's, it's great when we actually get a project that we have an established budget and we can get kind of twice as much work done for it. So it's good news as well as just from a overall aesthetic perspective on, on that site. Removing the old building as well as safety, it'll, it'll, it'll make that intersection and corner of our of our town look much better as well. So great, great to see that building go, actually.
Awesome. Anything to close, councillor Hughes?
Yeah, this is just addition through subtraction, I was like, so, thank you.
All right, I will again call for the vote.
Mayor, that passes unanimously as well.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on. Councillor Bromanski, I don't know if you heard me, but would be, help me if you could turn your camera on so I can see you if you have questions or comments. Because it's just monitoring many screens is hard. Thank you so much. Okay, we are now on to agenda item eight point two, the police services building accommodations. We should have Everett Cook. Oh, Aaron, are you presenting this one? Okay, go ahead, Aaron.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm here today on behalf of emergency services, presenting a couple of recommendations related to the renovations of Maloney and Bowdrey Place. For the policing branch of emergency services. This is as a result of some higher design and construction costs and other anticipated costs related to lifecycle upgrades. The first recommendation seeks council's approval for a reduction in the scope of capital charter of Holy zero zero six. In essence, this, this mainly relates to a reduction in the total space that is being added to Maloney Place while maintaining the planned upgrades that are required for safety and security of the employees in the building. The reduction in the scope removes plans for the addition of the second floor at Maloney Place as well as other renovations that would have necessitated the replacement of major building components such as the HVAC system. Administration intends that there will be flexibility in the targeted and intended scope of this project to ensure that costs do not exceed the five million dollar budget. As a result, throughout the project, a constant evaluation will be taking place to ensure that priority items are completed. This short-term accommodation plan allows council and administration to address the current and urgent needs of policing services while building in some much-needed time to assess the future of the policing services in the community and longer-term building requirements. The second recommendation being presented for approval is to draw three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the capital reserve to fund the required renovations at St. Albert Place. And this would be to accommodate the displacement of city staff that are currently working out of the first floor of Bowdrey Place. The total project budget of five million dollars is recommended to remain the same. So that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is within that five billion. It's not addition to. This concludes my brief summary and introduction of the agenda matter. And along with my colleagues from engineering and public operations, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Perfect, thank you, Aaron. I see councillor Hughes' hand up already. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Aaron. So I understand the intention to keep it within the five, and I understand that if we did the whole thing, it would be fourteen plus. Has there been any, we, we did approve, however, growing by law for seven point five. So, and I know that you said to us before, we're gonna keep it within five, but we did allow that latitude because, in part because the cost estimates were so old. Has there been any discussion?
Has there been any discussion among staff about what could be done if we just went to the maximum amount? Would it, but it changed any of the outcome. I realize that we are potentially looking at looking at entirely new building. But the second, I've been to the second floor. It's not pretty up there. So I'm trying to, like, has there been anything that we thought about of what we could do if we did increase that budget to seven point five? Um, and get something else done.
Uh, thanks for the question, uh, Counselor Hughes. Um, there, there hasn't been a, a really detailed discussion about that kind of mid-plan of, of a seven point five million dollar budget. And, and mainly because, once we start down, uh, a certain path with renovations, if, if we start to exceed to the second floor or do a larger expansion of the footprint of Maloney Place, it's gonna get us into that HVAC system replacements. And then once we get into those, uh, and some of the other lifecycle, uh, uh, changes that are required, it, it pretty much exceeds the seven point five and goes right to that, that twelve million dollar. Um, there, there may be, you know, obviously with extra money, there will be more things that could be done, uh, for sure. But, um, exactly what that would be, um, I wouldn't be, be, be prepared to answer that. Um, I don't know if, if Tim Saunders, uh, or some of my engineering colleagues would be able to, to, uh, provide any further detail on that.
Yeah, um, through the chair to Counselor Hughes, we did an evaluation based on the feasibility report that had been previously completed of all of the individual lifecycle items and categorized them into critical, um, and then, you know, lower priority as they went down. The, the, the spirit of what we are doing here is tackling the critical items while there's opportunity to study the future needs and get us to the twenty, twenty-seven, twenty timeframe. Um, but we do have, we do have all of the different RMR items categorized that they could be put to use. However, what we've identified are the critical items for the current state.
Thank you. So I think that the long-term plan, I don't think we've had this discussion as a council now, but the long-term plan would be like, do we want to build a second building or not? And that's kind of where we're at, right? And, and so I'm looking at you, Mr. Fletcher, in that is there, is there a timeline of when we think you are going to have that discussion?
Having it in a couple of weeks because Counselor Mackay has a notice of motion coming on that one, so that, that'll be June sixth, I think, Ken? Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know what time it's on the actual agenda, but I see that it's, it's included in the, uh, workshop as a potential add-on. It hasn't gone through the prioritization matrix yet.
Okay. I mean, the thing is, even if it's in the capital plan, it doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to actually manifest, right? So it's almost like a placeholder, but, um, okay, because what I would be curious about as a follow-up is like, I don't know when we're going to have the money to build a new police building. We're about to have a debt discussion in a couple of hours and, um, all, there's a lot of things that are up in play now, including how much room we have for debt in general. So I would love to know, I realize that you guys have definitely maintained the intention of going to five million and, and keeping it with that budget. But we did agree, allow more in the boring bylaw, like I said, to allow some latitude. And so what I would love to see is if we did have to exceed the budget, what will we be getting for that? And would it actually make a difference to the outcome of when we'd have to build a second building, for example? Um, or I know you want nine million for all of it, and I know that you just finished saying that once we open this HVAC, we've got ourselves a problem, and maybe it's an all or nothing. But there might be something else that might be valuable that might give us more time. I know that might be a Band-Aid, but I'm just not sure about, I don't know what's going to happen when this comes up. So I would love to, even if the answer is no, we can't do anything, it's like five million or nine million more. It would be great if we could just have that update, that when you guys have it, not obviously today, to just explore that, to determine if there is value in, in putting more things on that list.
I understood, Counselor. I, we can absolutely provide that, I think, prioritized, um. You know, what I would say is that the, the current five million dollars essentially gets us through, um, really a five-year horizon, right, or out to twenty twenty-eight. Um, the full project was really a twenty twenty-two or twenty thirty-two, excuse me, um, horizon. Um, so we're really talking about that four years. I, I can't tell you today, uh, the additional investment would do that, but we can put that together for you. I would recommend that, um, the scope change ideally be approved today, notwithstanding that feedback coming along to allow us to get on with those priority items, and then we can come back for that additional feedback.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't have a problem with changing the scope now, but if there's, if we need to just change it again, if we see there's opportunity, I don't know what council's appetite is to increase it, but if we increase it for a two and it buys us five more years to make it go to twenty thirty-two or something like that, then that might be worth it. Understand that we probably cannot open up the HVAC. So from what I hear, but hey, I'm not the engineer. You guys can figure that part out. So that was, I think those are the only questions I had.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And along similar lines with the boring bylaw, Mr. Fletcher, this is probably a finance question. The second motion is asking for three hundred fifty thousand out of Capital Reserve. Could that just be funded out of the boring bylaw as well? Or maybe you already had that conversation internally?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the question, Mayor Heron. Um, through consultation with legal, we've determined that because of the way that we worded the borrowing, um, bylaw, we only reference the two buildings of Maloney Place and Bowdrey Place. And because those, the, uh, the renovations are to St. Albert Place to allow that movement, um, we didn't feel that it was covered under the borrowing bylaw.
Okay. Yeah, I assumed you'd explored that, Diane. Thank you for that. Um, and then probably, I'm assuming some of those renovations to St. Albert Place will be beneficial beyond, um, just the accommodations during the construction, right?
That, that's correct, Your Worship. They're not, uh, temporary accommodations. They would make essentially a permanent footprint for, uh, those displaced on the first floor.
Can you describe a little bit what that's going to look like, Mr. Fletcher? Is it?
Um, yeah, so if, uh, for those who are aware of where the, the current FCSS, uh, or CS Community Services, excuse, footprint is, um, past the library on the left side as you come through the main entrance, uh, that whole area would be redone, uh, with additional workstations, offices for counselors, um, so essentially would consolidate the footprint uh, into a permanent structure. We can provide, um, an indicative drawing to council so you can see what it looks like, uh, for the money, um, electronically. Did you want to add anything, Diane?
I'm sorry, do you mean to the right of, like, when you first come in?
Uh, through the secret door. So as you come through, um, the main entrance and you're walking towards the back entrance on the left side, um, between the, the, the main atrium or the, the lobby, I guess, and when you bump into the, uh, the gift shop, that whole area is community services, uh, a footprint right now. Um, not optimized in terms of its structure, uh, and so this would actually put, create the proper workstations, the offices for our counseling sessions, reception, and, and open that up for, essentially a permanent home, um, for staff.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't mind a copy of the drawings for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. It sounds like a really good bang for the buck because that'll be necessary. All right. So, yeah, if we get a copy of that, that'd be great. Counselor Hughes?
Yeah, now I have a question that kind of flitted in and in my head. Is that going to be a permanent, because you, like, if we're doing the three fifty and you can fit the space there for the staff, is there a reason why we want to move them back to Bowdrey? Or that's their permanent new home, right?
That, that, the plan would be that that is now their new permanent home. We would not move them back to Bowdrey.
So, and forgive me if I'm missing something, but then what do we, what will Bowdrey be then?
I'll defer to Aaron Geisberg on that.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Hughes. So the first floor of Bowdrey, the, the project scope hasn't changed where the first floor of Bowdrey would be, um, the space designed and renovated for policing services. So RCMP members, municipal enforcement, and, um, some other, uh, services in that area, all, all related to policing.
Okay, I should have known that, and my brain just completely left at the building at the time, so now I remember that. So I think that's actually an excellent transition. Just keep everything together as a one-stop shop. If there's other questions, Mayor, I'm also going to bring forward this motion because I feel like I can get it to pass.
Okay. Yeah, I'm seeing any hands flying up into the air. So go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
Okay. At the revised Capital Charter Policing Services Building Accommodations Poli zero zero six, Attachment One to the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Agenda Report titled Policing Buildings Accommodations Poli zero zero six Scope Change be approved, and that three hundred fifty thousand be funded from the Capital Reserve in lieu of debt funding to address the required renovations in that place to accommodate the displacement of staff currently in Bowdrey Place and the remaining four million, six hundred fifty thousand of the approved budget be funded as debt as previously approved.
All right, any comments on that?
Yeah, um, I just, I understand that you guys told us no matter what, you hit the five million, and I know you did it. But like I said, I, I would like to know what would happen if we went slightly over, if, if there's an ability to, to do that and extend the life of that building, or stop the imminent need to have it come quick so early, there might be value in that. I don't know if we've explored it because we were trying to hit that number. Um, if it can't be done, it can't be done, but I, I would just like to see what we can do with what we've got, especially because I just don't know, even if it hits the capital plan, if it will be built what it's intended to be built. And I also to the public that are concerned about five million dollars towards a policing building, uh, we've toured it and they're extremely cramped and they have been working in conditions that most people would not be happily working in for many years, really without complaining about it. So, uh, seeing what it is, I mean, we have to accommodate the staff so they can work properly and do their job properly, and that's what this, I'm hoping the five million will accomplish. But if we, like I said, if we need to do something otherwise, I'd rather do it right the first time than have to do it twice. So, um, but thank you for bringing this forward. That's it.
All right, call for the vote.
Mayor, that passes unanimously.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Next was on consent. The motion was that the attachment to the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Agenda Report entitled Corporate Quarterly Report Q One, two thousand twenty-three, be received as information. And then they had, uh, two, six, three. This one, um, yeah, I'd like this one in the chat because we've put some names in there, haven't we? Just throw it into the chat. That would be great.
Sorry, Mayor, we're trying to get in the chat. It doesn't seem to want to go in.
Uh, that's interesting. Is there somebody in chambers that has it?
You can just walk it over to the deputy mayor if you wanted to.
Oh, I just saw something pop up. There we go. I've got it now. Okay. So that co- council endorsed a resolution entitled Provincial Lending Rates to Municipalities, provided as an attachment one to the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two Agenda Report titled Two Thousand and Twenty-three Federation Academy Municipalities Resolution and Alberta Municipality Resolutions, and refer to the Two Thousand and Twenty-three Alberta Municipality Convention for Consideration. The council appoint Counsel Broadhead as the resolution champion for the provincial lending rates to municipalities resolution. Um, that council second, the City of Edmonton proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-three Alberta Municipality Resolution entitled Provincial Supports for Downtowns, Business Districts, and Main Streets, provided as an attachment to today's Agenda Report, and that Counsel Mackay as a resolution champion, for the provincial support for downtowns, business districts, and main streets. Um, so you could speak to that one, Counsel Mackay, and that, lastly, that council second, the City of Erdies proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-three Alberta Municipality's Resolution entitled Review of Vehicle Collision Report Damage Threshold Provided as Attachment Three to Today's Agenda. And, oh, that council appoint Counselor Mayor Heron, or how about just Mayor Heron as the resolution champion for the review of vehicle collision reporting damage threshold at the convention. And then finally, that council accept attachment for the Two Thousand and Twenty-three FCM Convention Resolutions briefing attached to today's Agenda Report. So, Mr. Dooley, uh, if you're listening, I think you might be, you did a lot of work on that one, totally appreciate it. And we will do our best to represent you well. And Trevor, when I get home, we can talk about, um, a Brownfields one that I emailed you about. But for now, we're good. So we're on to bylaws. Nine point one, um, is the traffic bylaw amendments, and I think we have Mr. Schick with us. Hello, Dean. You have a bit of a presentation, or is this just really?
But yes, I do. I have a quick presentation. Happy to be here today. Let me share my screen and we'll get one. Everyone see that? Okay, hopefully.
Sure can.
Perfect. So, uh, my name is Dean Schick, and, uh, I'm happy to be here today to share a quick presentation on the proposed traffic bylaw amendments in front of council this afternoon. Um, this presentation should be fairly quick. Its purpose is to just make sure that we're clearly sharing the changes being proposed to the traffic bylaw and provide brief rationale that has also been shared within your agenda packages. The recommendation will then be noted and we'll have time for questions. And with me, I believe online, I should say, uh, Aaron is here on the enforcement side as well as Marta, uh, so she'll be able to answer your questions in those regards as well. Um, the amendment's being brought forward today focused around six key areas. There's a new definition that's going to be added, some helmet regulations that are associated to non-motorized equipment and bicycles, e-scooter regulations, uh, being brought in as permanent regulations, a road ban amendment, a speed limit amendment, which are largely just updates, uh, and, uh, general updates, uh, for fines and penalties associated with new regulations as well. Uh, the next proposed, or sorry, the, um, first amendment is within Part One of the, the bylaw. Uh, so definitions for skate or bike park. This amendment is simply recommended in an alignment to, with the proposed changes for helmet regulations of non-motorized equipment, which should be applied if passed to the broader network of sidewalks and highways, and therefore is being recommended to be captured within the existing and any future skate or bike parks. This recommended addition was not a specific direction from council, however, was identified by administration to benefits, benefit from its inclusion for the overall consistency in helmet regulations and for public understanding. The next proposed change is within Section Forty of the bylaw, which targets regulations associated with non-motorized equipment, including inline skates, roller skates, and skateboards. The change is adjusting the current regulation that all users of such equipment under the age of twelve must wear a helmet to an updated statement that, um, refers all users, regardless of age, shall wear a helmet. The section maintains the previous allowance for non-helmet use when there are recognized religious practice conflicts or producible certification from a valid medical practitioner. And this amendment is aligned from direct pre, uh, council direction. Uh, similar to the proposed amendments for non-motorized equipment, Section Forty-One of the bylaw also regulates bicycle operations, and this has been updated to reflect consistent verbiage, uh, associated with helmet use. The existing section maintains that no cyclist should be riding without a helmet, but the proposed update creates consistency in the wording that is being proposed for non-motorized and e-scooter helmet use by considering the guardians of children under the age of twelve, not permitting such young riders to ride without a proper helmet. Uh, Section forty-one point one of the proposed bylaw amendments adjusts the previous temporary section for e-scooters, which became obsolete as of January first, twenty twenty-three, to a permanent section that will regulate the use of e-scooters within the city. Largely, the previous conditions captured within the temporary, uh, e-scooter section are being carried forward and maintained, including the mandatory use for helmets regardless of age as per council direction. Additional considerations being brought into this section, um, also include the adding of the location of skate bike parks to an east, with, to which an e-scooter is not permitted, and then adding the prohibited action of riding tandem on an e-scooter. Um, being that the amendments for helmet use in e-scooters are some general clean, uh, beyond the amendments, I should say, uh, for helmet use in e-scooters, there are some general cleanup areas of the bylaw as well. Uh, the first being the removal of a road ban on Township Road five forty-four, high, uh, to the west of Highway Two, which you can see, um, in, in the map here. Um, Highway Two running north-south and then Township five forty-four, um, to which, uh, this roadway was just recently paved in twenty twenty-two, and as such, the roadway is of higher design and ability that can handle larger loads with low risk of infrastructure failure. Also, as of January twenty-two, with the annexation of Surging County lands, um, during initial transition, uh, road, majority of roadway speeds within the areas were largely maintained as per previous conditions. However, a location on St. Winston Churchill Avenue in vicinity of Poundmaker Road is proposed to be adjusted slightly to relocate a transition zone of speed from seventy kilometers per hour to fifty kilometers per hour away from the conflict point of the intersection. So the way that it stands in the existing bylaw, um, the way that it stands in the existing bylaw, um, if you can see my cursor, the the portion in yellow and beyond to the north is actually posted a seventy kilometers per hour within our bylaw, and it transitions to fifty south or or west of Poundmaker Road. So the transition point is actually the the conflict point of the intersection itself. With this amendment, we're, uh, recommending that the transition, we extend the, uh, lower speed fifty kilometers per hour, approximately two hundred and thirty meters north of the intersection, which gives drivers time then to be notified and transition and lower their speed prior to, um, entering the intersection of Poundmaker. The proposed amendments create a safer buffer, uh, with the increased speed, uh, zone of fifty kilometers per hour. Um, and then the transitions back to seventy kilometers per hour with rural cross section into the county. And the final area of proposed changes to the bylaw focus on the updates of schedule ten, uh, as related to fines and penalties associated with violations of the regulations. Uh, first area for penalties associated with school bus operations are are reflective of updates that are part of a document cleanup from previously approved amendments to the bylaw. Um, so this is in this section one on the slide. Um, these previous amendments resulted in some adjustments to the sections of the bylaw and as such are just being updated and cleaned up in schedule ten. The second area of amendments and fines recognize that the wording changes for helmet use and non-motorized equipment and associated fines to the new permanent regulations of e-scooter. So combination of addressing, um, this top one here with the user permit of a child for inline skates and non-motorized equipment, and then just the e-scooter regulations and their associated fines. Now, the final recommendations to council are aligned to reading and approving the bylaw amendments to including third and final reading. These recommendations will result in the bylaw amendments being approved and integrated into the traffic bylaw. And now we can take some questions.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Schick. Counselor Killig, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Dean. It just a question of clarification as to uh, why we specifically are calling out the the section or permit under age twelve. Wh- what, when we, when we say all, um, I assume that means all. And then we make a special mention of uh, or permit under age twelve. That kind of seems redundant. So I I was just trying to under, it it shows up three places. So a general question in why we have to do that.
Absolutely. And and maybe best if I can pass it to Aaron on the enforcement side for for direct comment.
I through you, Madam Mayor, Counselor Gillick. So that, uh, or permit wording, uh, what it does is it allows uh, law enforcement to ga- engage in conversations with, uh, parents essentially and guardians of of people who are, uh, under the age of twelve. So if they're not wearing a helmet or uh, on those those items, we can hold the parent and guardian accountable versus the ten-year-old or the eight-year-old.
And, okay, that's, uh, interesting. I hadn't thought of it that way, but, um, and and why did we select age twelve and not age fourteen or whatever? I, is that a kind of industry standard or?
I I saw councillor McKay turn his mic on, so I don't know if he wants.
No, yeah, age of twelve is is the law. I mean, you're you're not liable, uh, um, below that age for prosecute prosecutions or anything under bylaw or under statutory law.
Thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Or you're not twelve anymore.
Neither are you.
Definitely.
I'm a multiple of twelve.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Schick or anyone else?
I'll make the motion if there's no questions.
I'm seeing no more questions. Can't see councillor Hughes.
No, I'll turn it back on. I had it off while he was presenting, but no, no, no.
You're good. Okay. All right. Go ahead, councillor McKay.
That bylaw seven slash two thousand and twenty-three being amendment twenty-three to traffic bylaw eighteen slash twenty-two thousand and five be read a first time.
Okay, go ahead, councillor McKay. Any comments?
Uh, no, just just bring forward as, um, Mr. Schick identified that the the purpose of, uh, the report and the amendments to the traffic bylaw are just reflect some of the, uh, discussions we've had earlier, uh, this month around e-scooter regulations. They also integrate, uh, our direction associated to the discussion we had around the helmet regulations, but they just mainly clean up, uh, the remainder of the traffic bylaw that is either due to the annexation lands and or some of the things that, uh, we've identi- administration has identified over time.
All right. I see no more hands up, so I will call for the vote on first reading.
That passes with, um, councillor Bromansky opposed.
Oh, okay. Um, how about second time?
Bylaw, bylaw seven slash two thousand and twenty-three be read a second time. No comments.
All right. Councillor Bromansky, I must have missed you. You want to speak as to why you're post?
Uh, yeah, I did. Actually, I had, uh, my name up to speak prior.
I'm sorry.
Uh, the reason I I I won't support this one is I think when councillor Killig brought the motion forward, uh, in the beginning, his intent was not where it e- ended up. Um, he wanted to change some things for younger children, and we ended up with a a generic, uh, all ages bylaw out of out of, I guess, voting in the opposite direction. Uh, we're also by this process, we're having separate laws than provincial mandates. So when people come from the border of Edmonton to St. Albert, unless we have any signage or some sort of means of of telling them, no one's going to know that we have different bylaws in St. Albert. Uh, we haven't got any community feedback on this. The scooter pilot project, uh, we changed to a free market, um. So they should have agreements of looking after the scooter regulations in their business license agreement. And I, for the best part, we have responsible parents in St. Albert. I I hardly ever see anyone not wearing a helmet in St. Albert. Um, everyone's done a great job on it. The helmet bylaw has been here for years. And, um, and I don't think that, you know, we need to, um, uh, I guess, you know, go out and, um, and find people for things that they've been doing a great job until this point in time. So that's my reason for not supporting it. We've made it more complicated than it needs to be is 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 my opinion on this one. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else on debate? Call for the vote?
I'll close on two.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
I I just couldn't disagree with any more comments, other comments that I've heard. I mean, in the sense that, uh, every community has, uh, different regulations on any number of different, uh, um, issues and bylaws. Um, this one, uh, basically is we not find anyone. I mean, the background or report put forward by administration identifies that our 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 vehicle of choice has always been education. And, uh, this actually does provide us a really good opportunity to provide education by informing. And, uh, unfortunately, um, uh, I've seen a number of, uh, kids now walking the dog that I just obtained and, um, and and unfortunately, uh, I see a lot of fail to comply with the hu- helmet bylaw, and, uh, this just gives our our administration an opportunity to, uh, educate rather than enforce. And, uh, and and so I I'll leave my final comments at that.
All right, call for the vote.
That passes with councillor Bromansky opposed.
Thank you for that. Uh, I need unanimous consent for a third reading. Go ahead, councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw seven slash two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, call for that vote.
That fails with councillor Bromansky opposed. We didn't get unanimous consent.
Yeah, I get that. Councillor Bromansky, is there a reason you want to delay third reading?
I feel that we need to have a little bit of public input prior to third reading.
That is your right, and we can do that. I actually thought councillor Hughes did a very good job. We went through this the first time to call on the public to come and and present, but I don't see what the delay is going to do, but we will now schedule that third reading for the next council meeting. Uh, I had no emergent items that were, oh, tax rate bylaw, sorry. Um, there we go. After months of debate and amendments last week, uh, we're finally going to set it mill rate. Is there a presentation on this one? I've got Steve in Bannerman. He always does a good job of kind of summarizing it for the public on what we've done. Go ahead, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor Heron, council. I do have about a ten-minute presentation and not including time for questions afterwards. So I'll be sharing my screen here. And I'll just ask to confirm when when you see that screen in front of you.
All right, I will. I, all I see right now is started screen sharing. Oh, there we go. I see it. Go ahead.
Great. I apologize. My computer's been a little bit slow today, so it might be a little bit behind. So if I get talking ahead of my slides, please just let me know.
Okay.
So, good afternoon. My name's Steve Bannerman. I'm city assessor and senior manager with Finance and Strategic Services, and I'm here to present the two thousand and twenty-three property tax rate bylaw. Similar to past year's presentations, this will be broken into three separate sections. The first is a summary of the two thousand and twenty-three tax rate requisition. Oh, I got myself ahead of myself here. Just one moment. St. Albert tax notices are broken into three main components. The first is the municipal tax levy, which is detailed here. The general municipal totals of one hundred and twenty-four point eight million. This amount was determined December through the annual budget process amended by budget adjustments made on May second of this month. The service credit union capital line item on tax notices re- was requested by council in two thousand and five for transparency. This is the city's annual debenture payment for capital construction costs. A separate rate is also used for the annex Sturgeon County parcels or the two thousand and twenty-one annex Sturgeon Council or parcels. There's no line item for this in tax notices. However, as part of the annexation agreement, parcels located in the former Sturgeon County are taxed at the lower of the two rates between the two municipalities. The second main component to all St. Albert property tax bills is the provincial or education requisition, as it is often referred. This requisition is not controlled by the city of St. Albert. The funds are controlled or collected for funding for kindergarten to grade twelve education within the province. The requisition is made up by all property owners, whether you have a child in kindergarten to grade twelve or not. The total requisition of thirty-six point five million. Homeland housing is a public housing management body pursuant to Alberta Social Housing Act with a mandate to serve low to moderate income seniors, individuals and families. Examples in St. Albert include the Northridge Lodge or Chateau Mission. Finally, designated industrial is a smaller levy in St. Albert. It is primarily used for oil and gas or pipeline, and the provincial assessor values these parcels through regulated assessment. The total levies, one hundred and six, or excuse me, the to- overall total levies, one hundred and sixty-two point five million. The following slide is an extract of a sample property notice. You can see that the notice is divided into three separate categories or boxes for each of the three, three main groupies that property taxes are pulled from. The assessed value on the top right-hand corner is determined by ourselves, the assessors, and is multiplied by the tax rate council will pass today. Of the thirteen point seven billion in a property assessment in St. Albert, this residential's property share or the assessed value is four hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred of their portion, excuse me, of the pie of the one hundred and twenty-four point eight million is four hundred and fifty thousand. And you can see by the arrows on the left, you just times your total assessment by the tax rates, and they're separate because of municipal and service credit union place. And that gives you the total amount of your municipal taxes, and that would be with any residential property here in St. Albert. There are primarily two different tax rates in St. Albert, residential and non-residential properties. Non-residential is at twelve point five three, five two six mils, and residential is eight point two two, five two one mils. The following does not include service. The service tax rate. There remains one smaller residential subcategory in St. Albert. That's the vacant lands tax rate. The purpose is to incentivize property owners to improve vacant residential lots after seven years. Each year, a handful of these properties will drop off or be added to the list. The number has dropped by two this year to fifteen for the two thousand and twenty-three tax year. Two thousand and twenty-three service capital tax rates. Our annual debenture payment is three point two eight million. It commenced in two thousand and five. Two thousand and twenty-three is the nineteenth year of the levy, so we're almost there. Provincial legislation requires the city to levy and collect education taxes on behalf of the province of Alberta. The city of St. Albert does not set or control the requisition amounts. Variables such as growth, market value change, and reported assessment roll totals at the municipal level are factored into the requisition change results. Actual tax impacts are lessened by the effect of the new assessment growth occurring in two thousand and twenty-two. Average tax impacts are later in this presentation, and they are important to note for two thousand and twenty-three. Part two or section two, the summary provides a total tax rate expressed in mils for both residential and non-residential properties. And the total tax rate for residential would be eleven point zero one, zero one two mils for non-residential properties, sixteen point six nine, six three five. Now that we've had the opportunity to review tax rates, we'll provide a high-level summary of assessment changes. It is important to note that the mailing of St. Albert's combined assessment tax notices will occur on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our legislated valuation date is July first of two thousand and twenty-two. So changes to market value that occur subsequent to July first, two thousand and twenty-two form a part of next year's assessment. So a good recent example is the buoyant single-family dwelling market in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, just post COVID, and later those later changes prior to interest rates rising will be reflected in your two thousand and twenty-three assessment tax notice. St. Albert now has an excess of thirty thousand assessable parcels. Taxable assessment went up from approximately thirteen billion to thirteen point seven billion in the two thousand and twenty-two assessment year. This is primarily due to the strength of the residential market post COVID in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two. We have approximately eighteen point five thousand single-family dwellings, followed by sixty-five hundred condos and semi-detached units and eight hundred and eleven non-residential properties. An often overlooked part of assessment is exempt properties. This includes approximately one point five billion of the assessment base. So typically, schools, churches, city-owned properties and hospitals are exempt. A few exceptions occur, such as those city-held that that compete with private industry, or so an example are the retail areas and service place are fully taxable. Assessment growth are the physical additions to the assessment base. For example, if your municipality had ten homes and a new one was built in the two thousand and twenty-two tax year, you would have ten percent growth in that year. St. Albert's growth is not ten percent. However, it is averaged a two to three percent in the last ten years. Overall growth in the third bar in orange on your right-hand side. Notably, non-res growth in green. So the center bar has been significantly higher than residential in blue. Two thousand and twenty-three saw a decrease to non-res growth numbers, or excuse me, the two thousand and twenty-two assessment base saw a decrease to non-residential growth numbers as compared to prior years. However, with the expansion of Real, South Real and Lakeview District Business District, further increases are expected in the future. Continuing from the previous slide, thirty million or eleven percent of our total growth came from the non-residential category. The more majority did come from single-family dwelling growth on the right-hand side at one hundred and fifty-eight million. Thirdly, at eighty-four million was the multifamily growth. Of note, really, are those multifamily numbers? We're seeing significant increase in physical growth in the multifamily product within St. Albert. There's a small component of two million. That's not illustrated here. It's just another category that didn't show up well. So if someone was doing the math, it wouldn't perfectly add up. Leaving physical growth behind, we will now discuss market value change. The slide Rebecca reflects the overall market value to residential and non-residential categories. Residential assessment in base increased by three point seven percent. Non-residential continued to be stabilized at negative two point one. Non-residential continued to be stabilized at negative 2.1 with an overall 3.1% increase. Section 3, 2023 Taxation Impacts. We discussed market value change in the prior screen, and we can see that the assessment base did regress 0.6% due to the small decrease to the non-res and increase to the residential markets. There are two important distinctions between assessment base and tax split. Council cannot control the overall market conditions or economic forces for individual property title types and are therefore subject to overall supply and demand factors, and this is the assessment base. 2023 Taxation Impacts. The municipal tax split is something councils able to control through property tax rate bylaw and policy CFSO 5. Based on the proposed changes to the municipal tax split, it will migrate from 79.8 in 2022 to 79.1 in 2023, and that's reflective of the residential market. Tax composition and the three major components to tax bills. So the first component is the miserable tax increase, which is the largest to both residential and non-residentials will increase by 4.1 and 5.6% respectively. This forms 77% of your overall tax impact in 2023. Component two is the education tax impact diverged between the two non-res and res classes. This is primarily, the diversion was primarily between physical growth and inflation impact substance subsequent to the 2021 equalized assessment role. Residential properties increased by 2.2% on average, while non-residential properties decreased by 2.5. This makes up 22% of a total tax bill. And finally, component three, the smallest, is the homeland requisition, which increased by approximately 9%. Homeland is a part of our assessment base shared with Sturgeon County, Westlock, Redwater, Mornville. And due to the provincial equalization process, there will be differing impacts to the res and non-residential sectors. The following two slides, which are probably my most popular, are the most impactful to a typical residential and non-residential rate payer as they demonstrate the overall effect to a sample property in St. Albert. We initially begin with a home with an assessed value of 450,000. Due to market inflation impacts, the assessment has moved the 450 to 468,500. This is an $18,500 increase or 4.1%. For this type of property, the municipal levy has increased $155 or 4.1%. A minimal education tax increase of $4 or 0.4% is followed by an increase to the homeland housing requisition. The total increase to this profit property or this type of property is 3.2% highlighted red at the bottom right-hand corner. A caveat, this is a typical change. Properties with a greater assessment change than 4.1% would receive a higher proportion of the tax burden, and those with lower would receive a less-than-average increase. Next sample I'm providing is a non-residential property. So envision a warehouse in Campbell Industrial Park or a commercial building along St. Albert Trail. Their $1 million assessment decreased slightly by 0.2% or $2,000. Overall, this remained a flat market in comparison to our increasing residential market. However, as a positive, St. Albert's non-residential market has been resilient through COVID. In July of 2022, many sectors were still feeling lingering effects, while others were showing the first signs of recovery. In our second example, the assessment is higher as well as the tax rates. So the municipal levy will increase from 12,075 to 12,749, a 5.6% increase. The education levy, as part of the provincial equalization process, decreased by 160 or 4.1%. While the city of St. Albert cannot control this levy, council may note that in this presentation, two slides ago, the non-residential was the overall decrease was 2.5%. This was the change to the actual requisition amount. Due to the province basing their formula on the 2021 assessment base, physical growth is not included. So that's why the decrease was a little deeper than on the previous slide. Homeland Housing increased approximately $10 for 8.6%. Finally, the overall tax increase is similar to the residential at 3.2% and with differing impacts to each of the property components. Some notes regarding senior property owners in St. Albert. Under the St. Albert Seniors Homeowner Property Tax Assistance Grant Program, eligible seniors will continue to receive a $200 flat grant. Only one grant per household is permitted, and you do not need to apply to the city to receive this grant. If you're eligible, you will be credited directly to your tax account. The provincial Alberta seniors benefit is an income-based formula, and they provide that information to the city of St. Albert. Provincial seniors' property deferral program, this is a program that began in 2013. Through the seniors' property deferral program, senior homeowners can defer all or part of their residential property tax taxes through a low-interest home equity loan with the Alberta government. Loans are repaid when the home is sold, or sooner if the senior chooses. And finally, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Always really good presentation, Steve. I think, sorry. Possibly even valuable to take a clip of that and throw it on our website for an explanation of of the process and how the taxes are calculated and what else, because it's always, it's always really informative. Council Hughes question?
Yeah, just a quick thing, Steve. Just every time I see you, I still think that we're in Air Cadets together, so it's like timeless. We're both there at the same time. So just to know, you've never aged in my mind.
You're the first person to say that, Counselor.
Well, it's a special thing. Anyway, the thing I just want to clarify, when you mentioned the grants, just the public doesn't, and just so I get it right as well. Because it's income-based, we have more than 600 people who are seniors in Alberta. So it's only people who qualify for Alberta's huge benefit who'd be eligible for that provincial seniors' grant. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the province, the assessment actually doesn't collect any information at all. We signed an agreement with the province of Alberta, and each year they provide us, in the spring, they provide us the information or the homeowners that are qualified, and we just apply that directly to their tax bills.
Right, but it is an income-based program, so if they don't, everyone shouldn't be expecting it. It's only if they actually qualify for ESP.
Correct. You'd have to, you would have to meet their threshold, their income thresholds, the Alberta seniors' benefit program. The details are available online. I can, I'll make them part of our future presentations.
Sure. I'm thinking that, I know it's income-based, and I just, I'm thinking that maybe we may want to actually, I'm not sure how to put this, but have encouraged seniors to apply for ASPs. It's not automatic. I think you actually have to physically apply for ASP. At least it was when I worked for the government. And so, because some people may be thinking, oh, I'm not going to be getting anything in this particular category, so therefore I'm not going to apply at all. And they might want to apply just in case they do actually slip into that category and are eligible without realizing it. So that's just a thought that we may want to put something in there saying that even if you're not, you may want to actually apply in case you automatically would be able to be eligible if it's something changed. So, because it doesn't, I know you said it's income-based, it's automatic, but it's not automatic to get into ASP. That's what I've understood, at least. Things might have changed, but that's what I had. That's it. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, Counselor Hughes, you want to read the bylaw in?
I can't. Just give me one second here. Here I was being all brilliant, and then I didn't go ahead in my thing. Actually, I did have it there, and I have to scroll back. I'm sorry, I'm just, let's hear it, but I can get to it. I really, 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 really can.
It's in the chat if you need it to.
I know, but I'm so close. Okay, here we go. That bylaw 9/20, bylaw 9/2023 being bylaw to authorize the rates of property taxation in 2023 be read a first time.
All right, we'll accept that motion. Anything to comment?
I just want to reiterate to the public that I realize that many people are not going to be happy that the taxes have gone up, despite inflation's gone up, et cetera. Inflation does hit the city just as much as it hits everyone else, if not more sometimes, because our costs increase or sometimes even higher than inflation. And that this council and administration have worked very hard to get those taxes down from what the initial assessment was. From 9.2 down to 4.1. So I realize people don't like having tax increases. All I don't think anybody in this council is excited about having a tax increase in their bills either. But this is the best that we could do with the circumstances we had, and we did meet the intention of reducing those taxes the most that we could during this budget process, right up to the very last meeting where we had it, where we did additional debt reductions. So with that, we're going to have to let this year tax year go to rest. That's it.
All right, Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to sort of reiterate what Counselor Hughes said. It was a, it was an interesting budget this year and many fluctuations over the course of the debate. And so to the point that Counselor Hughes made, there was a lot of work done and changes. And so I think what I'm trying to say is that when the initial tax proposal comes out, it's, it's sometimes shocking, but it's, but there is work to be done. And even though the debate concluded at the end of December, here we are in May, and the and now we're applying the tax rate. So some changes and all for the better this year. So thanks to my council colleagues and to administration who worked so hard to put this together. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And a little bit of thanks. We've talked quite often about the downloading from the provincial government, but a little bit of thanks probably should go to them for doubling of the MSI operating, which dropped us on another half a percent. So that was good news through the budget process. Counsel Hughes to close?
I also have one more item that I just wanted to mention is that the information request about the tax increase for next year came back, and I just wanted to recognize this council because we did not approve that $1.4 million deferral into the next year. The result is that we've actually also decreased the proposal for next year's taxes by an extra 1.1%. So it was a difficult vote that we had to do, not keep the can down the road. But in this decision to do it this year, did not artificially reduce them. We've also effectively decreased the proposal for what we were expecting for next year, which is helping the story for why it's coming in debt lower next year, because I realize we're finishing up this one, but we're in the middle of the next one. So, thank you.
Perfect. Call for the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Okay, perfect. Second time, Counsel Hughes?
Yep, that bylaw 9/2023 be read a second time. Nothing further.
All right, call for the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Awesome. I'm doing these by direct message. Sorry, guys. And finally, Counsel Broadhead, you want to do unanimous consent?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw 9/2023.
All right, call for the vote.
That passes unanimously.
All right, Counsel Hughes, last one.
That bylaw 9/2023 be read a third and final time, and for the last time, this budget is finally done.
Call for the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Awesome. That's it for Tax Rate Bylaw. Next on our agenda, there was no emergent items, council updates. We're missing a couple counselors, but I'll take a brief update from those of you that are there. Counsel Broadhead, yours might be simple because you've been out of town for a bit. Oh, you, though you probably were working while you were there too. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So during the last couple of weeks, we had the Audit and Finance Committee meeting of the EMRB. And we received the audit 2022 fiscal year. And that was a clean audit, and so we are happy to receive that. And that will go to the EMRB board for final approval at the next meeting, I believe.
Is that it for you?
That was it for me, other than some finalization work of of the final payments to decommission the Transit Commission, and that is now a done deal.
All right. Thank you for that. Counsel Hughes, how about you?
I don't have any updates. Everybody's going to be meeting in the next three days. Thanks.
No problem. Counsel Kiel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Environmental Committee met on April 27, and we reviewed the environmental report card for 2022. We reviewed our environmental sustainability policy and also reviewed the waste diversion strategy, which was also brought to committee of the whole. So it was a very full meeting, and on May 4, members of the EAC did our own personal little river cleanup, picking up about 10 or 12 bags of garbage along the river behind Canadian Tire and, and and Sport Chek. So we kind of put our, put our rubber gloves on and put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, and, and participated in that. On April 25, we had our CSAC meeting. We looked at our ad hoc community events funding in our spring intake requests and our community capital as well, and reviewed those for funding. And we looked at our, we had a review of the community needs assessment, which also was brought to council as well. So good updates on those. Next, we had Edmonton Salutes meeting and had an excellent presentation from the Edmonton Elks around them wanting to do a partnership with Edmonton Salutes to bring that back to really focusing in on military members, military families as a, as a way to engage them back in the community. And, and they really stressed that they wanted to do this as a long-term partnership, not just a kind of a one, one game a year kind of thing. So that was very interesting at Edmonton Salutes. And then we have nothing really to report on. The Sturgeon Watershed, our board meeting is coming up on May 24, and the Sturgeon River Watershed meeting is coming up on May 18, so more next time.
All right. Thank you for that. Exciting about the Elks. That's a good story. And Counsel Brumansky?
Your Arts Committee is meeting again next week, but there's a couple of things that we missed kind of in the cycle of the updates here. So there's a call out for artists for the Fowler Park project, so people can see that online. If there's any artist that would be interested in putting their name forward for that, and we did do the request for the the two items that were approved in council today, so the Legacy Awards Program and the, you know, the RMR for art projects downtown. So I will have another update in about five days. Thank you.
And that Fowler Park is for local artists, isn't it, Counsel Brumansky?
Yes, yes. Oh, one other thing I did want to mention, sorry, and it's just because it was so far back on the arts when we're on the next one already. We did meet with the artist of the statue that was stolen downtown, and they were talking about different options for the replacement of that, and so that should be updated this coming week as well. There'll be more discussion on that. So that's it. Thank you.
Look forward to that. Thank you. All right, I think that's the drag everybody. I believe I did. Council motion for St. Albert Place Lifecycle Upgrades, Counsel Kiel, I'll get you to read it into the record. And then we'll put it up for questions.
Okay, thank you. The proposed motion is that administration, on behalf of council, develop a growth capital charter for consideration as part of the 2024 budget process. The capital charter should include the cost for installation of approximately 300 feet of recognition programmable color-changing commercial-grade LED lighting along the top edge of the balcony outside of council chambers is outlined in IR 23-02
Dash O two with the intent of this work to be added into the scope of S A P. Life cycle upgrades R M R project to gain efficiencies of time and cost with other work in twenty twenty four.
Awesome. Before I accept that, I will open it up for questions. Do you have any questions yourself, Counsel Killig, or any member of council of either the mover or administration?
Uh, yeah, I had originally. So all council and everyone knows, I'd originally hoped that this could have been included. Within the budget of the work that was already done, being done on St. Albert Place, but. In meeting with administration, they clarified, and I probably should have known better, is that. It wasn't in a regular R M R scope and. Because R M R is replace, repair, maintain, this is something new. So the wording's changed slightly to include that this would require a new. Budget charter and project charter with associated budget for separate deliberations and. Appreciate administration kind of setting me straight on that. And, but, but it is important that we follow process and. My, my objective still is that when it gets reviewed in detail. By administration, they come back with an updated project charter. That will take the vote at that time on what, what it will cost. My hope is, again, that the work nonetheless could be done in twenty twenty four. And maybe achieve some economies of, of financial scale and, and time scale as well.
Sorry, Counsel Killig, is that, is that your debate arguments? Is there a question?
What, pardon me?
I said, was that your opening debate or was there a question there?
I, I'm, I apologize. It should have been a question, but I, I was kind of jumped ahead to a debate, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. So quick question to administration. So I know this is coming back in November, and there's been discussion about economies of scale, so. Would it? If we delayed to November, does it preclude our ability to get economies of scale, or should we actually make a decision? Sooner than later, but whether or not we're doing this, if we actually want to be able to achieve that goal.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Jay Mason. Nope, there he is. He's popped up in anticipation. I'll turn over to him.
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Hughes. Um, no, we can still achieve that. So the, the, the contract that we have with S A P is, is a. A C M contract, right? So the only thing I'd have to run through with our purchasing group is when we're adding change orders that are not in the original budget. We'd have to just confirm, this is sort of a new situation, I'd have to run through the purchasing, whether we'd have to tender that separately. Or do it as a change order through the existing project.
So I guess I'm just saying that it would be a cost difference if we decide now or we decide November. If we chose to move forward on it, it's the same, because this is a multi-year project, right? So that we can. Fit it in somehow. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, because I thought if we needed to decide this now, we should tell you now if it makes a difference or not, but you're telling me it's irrelevant. Perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. I see no more hands up, so I will accept your motion, Counsel Killig. Go ahead on debate.
Well, I won't repeat the first part. But I, I would just like to say that the, the other key thing is that. In working administration, working with arts and heritage. I'm sure that they will be able to come up with a, a technical solution that also maintains. The integrity, look and feel of an important building like St. Albert Place. And I'm, I'm confident that they'll come back with the, the best technical recommendation. And I, I'm sure again that if, if we can, you know, around the world, see the like. Places like the Eiffel Tower or the Sydney Harbour Bridge, you know, C N Tower, High Level Bridge in Edmonton. Et cetera, lit up at night to recognize significant. Events in, in communities around the world. If we can find, or if. People can find solutions around the world like that, I'm sure we can find a solution like, like that for St. Albert Place. I think it's really important that we have many events throughout the year. Red Dress, Orange Shirt Day, Purple Shirt Day. Humboldt Recognition, Green Shirt Day. I wish, I wish we would have had a orange, white and blue day or a week. But unfortunately, the Oilers kind of didn't help us out on that one. But, but just the opportunity to recognize significant events. In our community and utilize a beautiful building like St. Albert Place to signify a, a signal to all residents. That we're recognizing those events. This is a great opportunity and a great way to do it.
Thank you, Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. So this isn't actually a motion to approve the project, it's just to bring the project forward for consideration. So it may or may not hit the cutting room floor of staff. They may just say this is a. Not going to hit our capital budget, but we can bring it forward separately, but at least we'll have the full background information. So the advantage I see to doing it this way is just that Counsel Killig could put forward notice of motion in October and say, let's do it. But then staff have less time to prepare the backgrounder to let us know the background information. So by doing it this way. Staff can give us the best picture possible of what the ramifications are and the possibilities. And that being said, then we can decide in November if we're a yes or a no on that. This is just so that we have a clear idea, in my mind at least. On whether or not this is something that we want to do and the real costs involved with it. I think it's a good idea. But we're not actually approving anything. We're just asking for better information when we do make the decision of budget. That's it. Thanks.
Good points. I see no more debate. Counsel Killig, I'm completely supportive. I'm excited to see where this comes in price wise and budget wise. But I think it's time that St. Albert join many other municipalities that have a way to. Recognize, commemorate, celebrate significant goings on in our community and in the world, so. Can't wait to see the final product, so I'm supportive. Anything to close?
Uh, yeah, just a reminder, as Counselor Hughes said, this is just to. Get administration working on bringing, bringing the details forward and bringing that growth charter with budget. Forward for vote at that time, so this is just the very, you know, first step in that whole process and what really look forward to it. When we go to deliberate deliberations for budget.
Awesome. I will call for the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate all your help, Ledge, because we are now onto information requests, notices, emotions. And announcements. I feel like there's a few in the queue, so. Um, I'm going to turn to. Ledge to just point them out to me. I know I have one, I think. Yes, I do. I will open it up. I had a I R, so mine was are there potential policy changes that would allow capital assets that are funded through life cycle reserves? To be ordered in advance of the year they are funded, for example, mobile equipment that we. Know will need to be replaced within the next two to three years and require more than one year for delivery. So that was my I R. Counsel Hughes, you had a similar one, didn't you?
So, and Cheryl, do you have them all together and send them to me? I have a, a separate motion before I did the postponed motions. And she doesn't have this one. I was just typing it up this afternoon. So I'll do the motion, which is that the city improves its service level for the customer service center, including taxation and utilities. On the main floor of our place to eight thirty to five P M, Monday through Friday, excluding statutory holidays. Without incurring a tax increase for the changes to be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty three. So that was the just regular notice of motion, and I'm trying to.
You want the changes effective almost the same day we're going to vote on your motion?
Um, I think we can put it on the sixth, so we, it would be on the nineteenth. And I have a rationale for that. It's, I would like it if possible. Thank you, Cheryl. You rock.
What did Cheryl say? Did I miss something?
The whole, all my motions to read.
But I don't, I think this won't appear until, not the June sixth. Council agenda, because that's only two weeks.
Three weeks, isn't it? Twenty third, thirtieth, and sixth.
My, my off? Okay. Well, if, if we have a problem at agenda planning, I'll let you know, but okay.
And if the date needs to be revised, I mean, obviously, I'll look forward to feedback from administration. The rationale behind this is I would like to have the, the opportunity to have it increased prior to people having to pay for their taxes at the end of June. So if it needs to be a week after, or if it can't be done at all, then let me know, but it would be lovely if we could have it available for when the rush comes in. The other motions I have is that administration completed assessment, including costs, partnerships, impacts, pros and cons. Potential locations with smaller beginner level per disc golf course, including retaining the Langcombe Disc Golf Course by October thirty first, twenty twenty three. The information request, which is what is the number of meters of sidewalk and trail in each of the five classification categories of very good to very poor. Another information request for budget is provide a map or other details to describe the planned twenty twenty four R M R to local and collector robe improvements. And that the motion I have is that the trail budget, ma- trail maintenance budget is returned to the original budget of two hundred seventy five thousand for twenty twenty four. And then one more information request, which was regarding the potential for multi-year budgeting for the life cycle capital. What would be the savings that was implemented as of the twenty twenty four budget, if it could be? If it would be possible to implement it as the twenty twenty four budget, and if not, the earliest year that it could be implemented. That's all I have. Thank you.
Am I missing anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to in camera, so somebody's gonna.
I did have a couple of just general questions, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counsel Killig. Go ahead.
Yeah, just for administration, there's a question around the doggy waste disposal. Bag dispensers that are distributed throughout the city, the little cylinder ones. That probably all familiar with along the walking trails. Now that. There are no single use plastic bags available for residents to put in there, or will, will those still be? Utilized or maintained by the city?
Thank you, counsel. I'll ask Director of Wreckin Parks, Danielle Budlam.
Through the chair to Counselor Killig. Um, we are planning right now for the elimination of single use plastics. It's on our radar, and we're really watching and observing the situation just to see. Anecdotally, how people are continuing to use the dog bank dispensers moving forward. We do have a cross departmental dog working group that also has this on their radar, and they're continuing to work and have some discussions about how we move forward. We'll continue to keep E L advised as this progresses and as we prepare for the elimination of single use plastics, and we will engage council. In future, if required for a service level change or any funding required, if we want to change approach. Um, but as a reminder, the dog bank dispensers were always intended to be supplemental infrastructure, because it's noted in the animal bylaw that. Dog owners are required to have a bag on hand at all times to pick up after their pets. It was meant to be a supplemental piece. So, but we are looking at it. We will keep our eyes on that one as it moves forward.
Uh, thank you. And then a, a simple question. What, what's the timing of the launch of e-scooters and, and will it? Be affected by the discussions we just had on helmet bylaw?
So it, it shouldn't, no. The delay in the bylaw means that we'll have a different sort of regulatory framework for the first couple of weeks, but the team will be working on enabling the launch of these scooter businesses as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, good questions. All right, now I will. Gladly take over as host, and we will set up some breakout rooms to go in camera. I see, uh, I don't think there's anything coming out of in camera that will need a public motion. And then we'll adjourn and meet upstairs for the debt strategy, so. Soon as I have the host, somebody let me know.
Mayor Heron will need a motion to go in camera.
Oh, yeah, we need that too. Okay. Uh, we can start with that then. Counsel Killig, I just saw your hand go up.
Uh, that council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to. Section twenty four one A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
All right, thank you for that. Call for the vote?
That's passed unanimously.
Okay, I will allow council to gather up and go into the lounge while I wait for. The host authorities.